I'm going to call to order the Board of Alderman meeting Monday, November 10th, 2025. Roll call.
Schenkel.
Present.
Brown.
Present.
Huckabee.
Present.
Holy.
Present.
Long.
Present.
And Jones.
Present.
Chief Hokes, would you open us an order prayer?
Absolutely. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all of our blessings. We thank you for tonight. The city business being done, for the lead guide and direct. We ask all these things in your name, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on to the approval of minutes. The minutes for the Board of Alderman meeting dated October 27th, 2025.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
I'm sorry, before we proceed with that, I did notice there was a motion and objection during the closed meeting that was not recorded. Present to 6100207, and Robert's Rules of Order requiring complete minutes of all meetings, including closed sessions, and 6100226, mandatory entry objections to improper closures. So I move that the minutes of October 27th closed session be amended to include a record of the motion made during that session, and my timely objection to its discussion on grounds that exceeded the announced scope under 6100223, and that the fact that the motion received no second and died. So I'd like to table the minutes to allow for correction.
Are you referring to closed session only?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be the second one, correct?
Is that not what we're on?
We're on the first one.
Okay. Move my stuff over to the next one.
Okay. Minutes of the Board of Alderman meeting dated October 27th, 2025.
Move to approve those minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented by Alderman Foley, and second by Alderman Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On to the closed session minutes of the date October 27th, 2025.
Do I need to repeat myself? But yeah, I'd like to table those minutes because there is a motion made and an objection that's required by the Robert's Rules Procedures and State statutes to be recorded in the minutes. So I'd like to ask that those get tabled. Consideration on how it needs to be worked and added to the minutes.
Motion to table.
Motion to table. Second.
Motion to table the minutes from the closed session, October 27th, 2025, by Alderman Huckabee, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Public communications and remarks to the general public and general announcements. Each speaker is limited to three minutes or less. This is a very large group of people. I don't know how many people are planning on speaking this evening, but everybody will have their opportunity. Because of the size of the crowd, we will be sticking to three minutes. So if I would flag you off, not being rude, but we just, we have to continue with business. So if you do, please come up to the microphone over here so that those who watch the recordings or whatever have that, and please state your first and last name.
Hey, you guys all know me. I'm Alicia Hill. I'll speak for probably most of everyone here. I've called most of them here. I guess the big question on everybody's mind is, most of us voted for Travis, and we're confused as to the bit on the agenda about removal of the mayor. So I know that closed business is not something that you can speak about to everyone, but we're all curious and would like to, you know, have some transparency about what's going on. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. I don't need three minutes. That's my only question. Anybody else? You're welcome to come speak.
I think that's the question everybody has, want to have transparency. Well, I don't know why.
It's my understanding, I'll take a couple more seconds here. It's my understanding that even, oh, I'm nervous. I talk in front of people all the time. It's my understanding that even if Travis is removed, he can still run again in April. Is that correct? Travis, are you planning on running again in April?
I don't know that in my official capacity it's appropriate to answer, but I'll answer you afterwards.
Okay, absolutely. So anybody who wants to ask questions afterward, I guess we can say.
Within reason.
Within reason, sure. I'm sure my kids will be calling and asking where I am. Yeah, so I'll just address the crowd. Everybody here, there's going to be discussions.
You need to address the board.
The board.
Sorry.
The board. I'll address the board. I'll just change the way, I'll change the way I was going to say it. All of the people here have taken note of every one of you who's sitting on the board. So I would choose wisely, because I think everyone here is aware now of situations. And I don't know all of the details, and that's why I'm here, because I want to. But I think everyone here is aware and paying attention now, whereas maybe we weren't all before. So I probably have taken my three minutes. Thanks, guys.
Hi, my name's Brandon Graham. And my question is, I don't know all the details neither. As have everybody else, that's why we're here, we want the details. But I do have a question of, who is, who's supposed to hold people accountable if they do wrong? Because I know if I do wrong, I'm going to have to take accountability for that. And I don't think anybody setting up there at that table is any different to me. So I would like an answer for that. If we can probably get that, that'd be great.
My name's John Page. So I wrote some things down, and I'm just going to read them to you, because obviously you guys aren't going to put yourselves out there. So I personally heard opinions from both sides regarding the issue of removing our mayor for allegedly creating a hostile work environment. I cannot say one way or the other, because I was not present and do not have not spoken to both parties involved. However, I do believe it is important for you to follow the mandates and the rules set forth by our city and our state for everybody sitting at this table. If any rules were broken, then those issues should be handled appropriately and in accordance with proper procedures. If no rules were broken, just feelings, the city of Fredericktown and our community will be the only losers in all of this. I can only share my own experience I've had with the multiple conversations I have with the mayor outside of City Hall at different venues, and not once have I heard him badmouth or speak negatively towards anyone, even in situations where he could have had comments regarding how the vote went or the outcome of any matter of issues, just not in his personality. The question that I have to the city council is this, do we have an extra $30,000 to $40,000 in our budget to remove a city official that could potentially be reinstated in less than six months? For the past 20 years, our city has faced scrutiny about how our money is spent and who benefits from those decisions. Yet I believe it's clear that over the past two years, this town has started to turn around. Our downtown is thriving with restaurants, our Chamber of Commerce is stronger than ever, and we've secured grants for long-needed infrastructure upgrades, including sewer improvements. My advice to the city council is simple. Work together, just as you promised to do when you were elected. Set pride aside and focus on what's best for the community and its people.
Hello. I am actually very new here. I am a business owner in another state.
Your first and last name.
And I'm sure that there are numerous employees of mine that probably thought I handled them with hostility. And so it's really just in the eyes of the beholder of what went down. I have no idea what went down. I'm very new here. I apparently arrived a half hour late to this meeting. But I will tell you this, the town that I moved from, I don't know why I cry. I cry all the time. Even in my old city council meetings, I don't know if it's the microphone or what, but I left that town because the city was not being transparent. That was literally the number one reason I left that town. So I'm asking you, you do what you need to do to be transparent. You do what you need to do to make sure that the citizens know what is going on in this town. That's all I'm asking for. Transparency is so important. Thank you.
What was your first and last name? I'm sorry.
What?
What was your first and last name?
Chris Nesbit.
Thank you. All right. If that is it, I thank everybody for speaking. All those on the line this evening. On to tonight's agenda. I'm not aware of anything that needs to be added or removed from tonight's agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Foley. All in favor? Any opposed? On to reports of officers and mayor's reports. I just want to thank all of the community churches and the school for what they're doing to try and fill the gap right now with the SNAP benefits, questions, and the issues that have arisen on the federal level. I think it speaks volumes about the character of our community, being willing to help out, even sometimes when it's painful for ourselves to, for those of us to have enough to bless others, whether that's a canned good, whether that's a check or a donation, to keep a much-needed service open in our community. I just want to say thank you to, there's too many to name, so I just want to say a generic thank you to all of those men and women who make that possible for our community, especially for those individuals with low income and who do assist us needs. On to presentations. There are none this evening. The administrator's report.
Anything to add?
So landmark is still going to be here sometime to get the pool pumped?
So they said they, they pushed the date back again to the middle of December now, then. To answer your question about the water plant in Walgreens, we think when the water got slow in the lake, it started pulling all that trash up into the pump. So it's got one or two stopped up, is what we think. We've contacted divers to come and go up inside of the tube and see what's in there.
All right. There is no old business. On to new business. An ordinance of the city of Fredericktown to amend Exhibit B to Section 1.205, reacting to employer, what is this? Relating, sorry, it's missing some letter. Relating to employee pay scale.
Make a motion the ordinance be read the first time by title only.
Second.
Motion the ordinance be read the first time by title only by Alderman Foley, and second by Alderman Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
In order to amend the city of Fredericktown personnel rules and regulations passed and approved December 11th, 2006, as amended, amend Exhibit B to Section 1.205 relating to the employee pay scale established in the effective date, revealing all ordinance in conflict here with rest by reference. Long.
Aye.
Holy.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Huckabee.
Aye.
Schenkel.
Aye. Move the ordinance to be read a second time by title only, please.
Second.
Motion the ordinance to be read a second time by title only by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
An ordinance amended to the city of Fredericktown personnel rules and regulations passed and approved December 11th, 2006, as amended, amend Exhibit B to Section 1.205 relating to employee pay scale established in the effective date, and revealing all ordinance is in conflict here with rest by reference. Long.
Aye.
Holy.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Huckabee.
Aye.
Schenkel.
Aye.
Ordinance passes.
Resolution concerning the removal of Travis Parker as mayor.
Mr. President, I'd like to request a point of order to request that my formal written objections to this resolution be entered into the record at this time.
So be it. We'll take just a moment to read what's been handed out to us. Have you had time to read that, Mary?
I have.
Would you like to comment, please?
I can. All right, so the first thing that Travis issued raise is, probably publicized public business. I think that this meeting is where these resolutions and articles are to be discussed. I drafted them, nobody else drafted them. Which goes to your second point of hiring these other attorneys. This resolution would authorize the hiring of these other attorneys, but they had not been hired to that. I received, well, actually, Teresa forwarded to me a request that she had received from Alderman, asking me to draft them, and so I did. But these folks didn't, I haven't seen this until the package, same time we did.
So an independent Alderman requested for the city attorney to be put on task without a conversation with the board as a whole?
He asked that it be, I think that the issues, everybody is well aware of the issues.
Everybody except for the voters. But does, but does a single Alderman have the authority to act without the board as a whole? They're the legislative branch.
They have the authority to request that the resolution be provided to them to vote on.
But, but one Alderman specifically requested for you to be put on task to draft these for the meeting tonight?
There were two.
There were two, but that's not a quorum, so that's why I'm asking.
It was not a meeting, and they were independent, separate requests.
But can two Aldermen act independently?
Anybody can ask for something to be placed on the agenda.
Okay.
I think I answered your questions, which you proposed. And do you, do you want to go through the resolution, or what? Because your third point is the due process concerns, and the resolution itself addresses that.
I can't proceed over the meeting, so I can't proceed over the meeting. I have written my objections into this, just for the record, so I can't, this is about me, so I cannot proceed over the next step and call for action.
I'm not asking, I didn't know if I had answered your questions that she imposed.
I mean, I didn't ask any questions. This is a written objection for the record.
Okay.
The board president acknowledged.
Okay.
You're going to motion to read the resolution by title only? I'm sorry.
You can't do it by title only, since you've got the audience from your own library.
I amend the motion to read it in full, please.
I'm sorry. Or do you, I apologize.
That's okay.
Why are you making a motion?
Please, please read it in full.
Do you want me to summarize or do something else to inform the board?
Sure, the more information, the better.
Do you want it read in full, or do you want?
Read it in full.
I'll second that motion, to read it full. Huh?
You're conducting the meeting yourself, you're talking about, you want to read, okay.
So at this, so we have a motion on the floor with a second to read the resolution in full. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Resolution concerning the removal of Travis Parker from the office of the mayor of the city of Fredericktown, Missouri. Where is Travis Parker in the elected mayor of the city of Fredericktown, Missouri? And whereas during his term, the mayor Travis Parker is alleged to have committed certain acts which may constitute, Miss, do you want me to read it?
Sure. All right, I'll pick up, whereas during his term as mayor, Travis Parker is alleged to have committed certain acts which may constitute misfeasance, malfeasance, and or nonfeasance in office, as more specifically set out in the attached articles of impeachment. And whereas, the Board of Aldermen of the city of Fredericktown desire to consider such allegations, and if determined to be true, further consider and determine, consistent with Section 115030 of the City Code of the city of Fredericktown, Missouri, whether said actions constitute misfeasance, malfeasance, and or nonfeasance in office, and whether Mayor Parker should be disciplined up to and including removal from office. And whereas, the Board of Aldermen accordingly desires to schedule a hearing where it will convene as a court of impeachment to hear evidence, provide notice to Mayor Parker of these proceedings, applicable rules to be observed, and an opportunity to be heard on the charges identified in the article of impeachment, and authorize the issuance of subpoenas necessary for such purposes. And whereas, this resolution has been passed by a majority of the board members, and the mayor has no authority to veto such a resolution. Now therefore, it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of Fredericktown, Missouri as follows. Section 1, Mayor Parker hereby provided notice of the charges and specifications as presented in the Articles of Impeachment prepared by the city's attorney, a copy of which is attached as Exhibit A and incorporated by reference. The city shall effect immediate service of the resolution and Articles of Impeachment on Mayor Parker via certified mail return receipt request. Section 2, the Board of Aldermen shall convene as a court of impeachment at a public hearing on December 3, 2025, at 5:30 a.m., and such hearings shall continue from day to day or at such later date and time as may be found necessary at the police department meeting room, 1237 West Highway 72, Fredericktown, Missouri, to hear and consider the allegations, and if determined to be true, to determine whether Mayor Parker should be removed from office or other disciplinary action taken pursuant to the authority granted under Section 115030 of the Code and/or the Missouri Administrative Procedure Act. Section 3, Scott Foreman Esquire of Newton, Missouri, shall present the city's case and have the burden of proving the alleged charges. Mayor Parker may be represented by counsel at the hearing. Both parties shall be entitled to present evidence and to cross-examine witnesses. Mayor Parker shall have a deadline of 5:00 p.m. on November 17th, 2025, to 5:00, should he desire a reply to the articles. The parties shall exchange a list of witnesses and exhibits to be offered at the hearing and in pre-hearing motions no later than 5:00 p.m. November 24th, 2025. Section 4, the president pro tem or another duly authorized board member shall preside over the hearing before the Court of Impeachment, and shall make all rulings on procedural, evidentiary, or other matters brought to his attention with the assistance of Arthur Pistorio, paying Pistorio here in Missouri, as a legal advisor, and take all such action necessary or desirable to facilitate the prompt and fair hearing and consideration of the charges. Section 5, the city administrators authorized to enter an agreement on behalf of the city with a legal advisor and a special prosecutor. Section 6, the contested case hearing before the Court of Impeachment shall be conducted in accordance with the ordinances of the city of Fredericktown, Missouri, and the Missouri Administrative Procedure Act as applicable. The Court of Impeachment shall consider the evidence, arguments of counsel, and written briefs of the parties, if any, and shall cause written findings affecting conclusions of law to be had upon the charges presented. The decision of the court shall be published along with such further actions as may be authorized or required. Section 7, this action is taken by and on recommendation of the Board of Aldermen independent of the mayor's approval or recommendation, and does a two-thirds majority vote of all members of the Board of Aldermen sitting as a court of impeachment as required to support a finding of guilt and imposition of discipline up to and including removal from office pursuant to Session 115030 of the Code. This resolution having been read on this 10th day of November, 2025, the Board of Aldermen vote as follows. Remember, the vote will technically take it. I presume you also want me to read the Articles of Impeachment. All right, Chris?
Mm-hmm. Please.
Okay, so the Articles of Impeachment. The Board of Aldermen of the city of Fredericktown, Missouri, on its knowledge of information and belief, charges that Travis Parker has committed such acts of malfeasance, misfeasance, and or nonfeasance as warranting his impeachment from the office of mayor, as follows. Article 1, the city of Fredericktown, Missouri, Mayor Travis Parker, in violation of Code of Ordinance, Section 115100, has directly interfered with the duties of employees subordinate to the city administrator, and that Travis Parker has used his position in office to intimidate, disrespect, and or threaten city employees. Article 2, the city of Fredericktown, Missouri, Mayor Travis Parker, violated the social media policy of the city adopted by Resolution Number 202305, Session 6K8F, that directs the mayor, the Board of Aldermen, and employees that they shall not comment on city-related legal matters on city's social media sites without the specific approval of the city attorney, and that on September 26th, 2025, Mayor Parker posted on the mayor's Facebook page as an official statement of the city, that the city has violated Missouri sunshine law, exceeded board authority, improperly restricted constitutional rights of due process, improperly restricted constitutional rights of free speech, failed to give proper notification to elected officials and the public, and accurately recorded meeting minutes on each of the occasions of September 4, 2024, September 8, 2024, August 11, 2025, September 4, 2025, September 8, 2025, and September 10, 2025, in an attempt to avoid due transparency and accountability. However, Mayor Parker had made no attempt to bring his allegations to the attention of city staff, the city attorney, nor the members of the Board of Aldermen prior to September 26th, 2025, with any effort on remedy, an error of this deed, and/or to prevent future errors on this deeds. Article 3, the city of Fredericktown, Missouri, Mayor Travis Parker, in violation of the city's policy of in violation of the city's policy of keeping personal information relating to disciplining employees confidential, disclosed confidential employee information to the public, including information that was learned during the board of Aldermen meeting properly closed under the Missouri Sunshine Act, in a Facebook post on the mayor's Facebook page on September 26, 2025. Mayor Parker's actions specifically relate to and affect the administration of his office as the mayor of the city of Frederictown, and are of a substantial nature, directly affecting the rights and interests of the public, thereby warranting the impeachment of Mayor Parker from his office as mayor for the city. Therefore, the board of Aldermen phrase for an order of impeachment removing Travis Parker from his office as mayor of the city of Frederictown, Missouri, and pursuant to their credibility as the court of impeachment deems appropriate under the circumstances.
Yes.
Jones?
Nay.
Long?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Schenkel?
Yes.
Holy?
Yes.
Hakaba?
Nay.
I thank everybody here for all the Facebook posts that we're talking to.
I, 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 public communication is.
The name was called, and we want transparency, that's what we vote for.
Sir, I understand people have their comments, but we do have a procedure here. So, I'm sorry, but we can't, we can't continue that, we have business to conduct. All right, on to number three, an ordinance of the city of Fredericton to execute a contract between Colin Winch relative to lineman apprenticeship school.
Move the ordinance to be read the first time by title only, please.
Second.
Motion, the ordinance be read the first time by title only by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Long. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Frederictown, Missouri, to execute a contract by and between the city of Frederictown and Colin Winch relative to lineman apprentice school in Furtherset, ordinance shall authorize and direct the city clerk to attest a signature of the mayor, and the rest by reference. Schenkel?
Yes.
Long?
Aye.
Jones?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Holy?
Yes.
Hakaba?
Aye.
Move the ordinance to be read a second time by title only, please.
Second.
Motion, the ordinance be read the second time by title only by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Long. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Frederictown, Missouri, to execute a contract by and between the city of Frederictown and Colin Winch relative to the lineman apprentice school. And further said, ordinance shall authorize and direct the city clerk to attest the signature of the mayor, rest by reference. Schenkel?
Yes.
Long?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Holy?
Aye.
Hakaba?
Aye.
Ordinance passes.
Item number four, ordinance of the city of Frederictown to execute in contract by between, sorry, by Jake Williams relative to lineman apprenticeship school.
Make a motion, the ordinance be read the first time by Todd Longland, please.
Second.
Motion, the ordinance be read the first time by title only by Alderman Brown, second, sorry, Alderman Schenkel, second by Alderman Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Frederictown, Missouri, to execute a contract by and between the city of Frederictown and Jake Williams relative to lineman apprentice school. And further said, ordinance to authorize and direct the city clerk to attest the signature of the mayor, rest by reference. Schenkel?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Holy?
Aye.
Hakaba?
Aye.
Make a motion, the ordinance be read the second time by title only, second.
Motion, the ordinance be read the second time by title only by Alderman Holy, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
An order to authorize the mayor of the city of Frederictown, Missouri, to execute a contract by and between the city of Frederictown and Jake Williams relative to lineman apprentice school. And further said, ordinance to authorize and direct the city clerk to attest the signature of the mayor, rest by reference. Schenkel?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Holy?
Aye.
Hakaba?
Aye.
Ordinance passes.
All right, on to additional business, accounts payable.
Make a motion, repay our bills, second.
Motion to pay the bills by Alderman Schenkel, second by Alderman Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Remarks of special privilege by the Alderman? All right, there is no closed session to follow this business, this meeting, there is no additional business. Do I have a motion to adjourn the board of Aldermen meeting?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn the meeting by Alderman Schenkel, second by Alderman Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?